Well, I'd like to call this meeting to order and the first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
Michael D. Inez, through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business tonight is to swear in the council members and, well, approve tonight's agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to add?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. First order of business then in tonight's meeting is to swear in the mayor and the council people, Todd and Jennifer. Cheryl, you want to take care of that then and then we'll sign the papers and continue on with the meeting.
Do we got to go up here?
I think we do.
Mayor Dennis Wagner and council members Todd Klow and Jen Lemire have been elected to the four more years in the office of mayor and council member for the city of Rainier. If you guys want to read your oaths.
I, Dennis Wagner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of mayor of the city of Rainier in the county of Coochie, to which I have been elected, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I, Jennifer Lemire, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of council member for the city of Rainier in the county of Coochie, to which I've been elected, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I, Todd Klow, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of office of councilman for the city of Rainier in the county of Coochie, to which I have been elected, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Oh, everybody look this way and smile pretty. Thank you.
First order of business then to recommend approving the regular council minutes for December 17th. Everybody have a chance to read those? Any corrections? Then get a motion, please.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
You have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend approving December 2024 claims list. Everybody have a chance to look at that?
I got one question. Cheryl, on the city's general fund, it says City of International Falls, and it says firehouses?
Hoes.
It's supposed to be hoes?
Uh, hoes, yes.
Firehouse?
Yes.
I couldn't say, what is a firehouse?
Yeah, yes. We purchased some used firehouses for the rent from them, but...
For me?
Not houses.
Then I'll make a recommendation that we approve the claims list.
I'll second.
You have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend accepting the account balances and financial statements for December 31st, 2024.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
You have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend the designation of the city attorney of Freiberg Law Firm.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
You have a recommendation in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend designating the official newspaper, The Rainy Lake Gazette.
I'll make that recommendation.
And I'll second.
You have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend designating the depositories of Bremmer Bank, Border States Bank, True Star Federal Credit Union.
I'll make that recommendation.
And I'll second.
You got a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend selecting Todd Klow as the mayor pro temp?
I'll make that recommendation. I'll second.
You got a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend the appointments of various committees, which we have, and these are the lists, let me get them out. Okay, committee of the whole, all councilmen members, north, and we'll, I'll read them all. If there's any discussion that we want to change one or the other, we'll do that. Not, we'll approve, just do one approval. Committee of the whole, all council members, North Cooch sanitation district, John Bruggeman and myself as alternate, now John has suggested he may not serve anymore, so if that's the case, I will step in on that one. Familiar with how they work, so it won't be a problem. Cooch County Development Association, KCDA, Dennis Wagner, Rainier Land Use Planning Commissions, Joanne Kilner, Convention and Visit Bureau, Joanne Kilner, Safe Harbor Transit Doc, Todd Klow, Jen Lemire, and Cheryl. Cooch Hazard Commendation Committee, Ronnie Wilcox, Cheryl Grathrow. Capital Planning Committee, Jennifer, Ron, Wilcox, Cheryl, Nick Hagan, and Jen Seeger. Cooch Child Care Initiative, Joanne. Rainier Parks and Planning Committee, Jennifer Lemire, Ron Wilcox, and Cheryl. Any discussion on those nominations, appointments?
I recommend the 2025 appointments to various committees.
I second that.
You have recommendations and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, moving on. To recommend approval of Resolution 2025-2, the approval of electronic fund transfers. You guys read up on that and everything, the state and how we have to get that approved, so?
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
You have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. To recommend not waiving the statutory tort limits of the LMCIT liability coverage waiver, our insurance there, not to waive the statutory limit?
Yeah. I'll recommend that we approve that.
I'll second that.
We have a recommendation, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, to recommend accepting Rainier's club of donation of $4,000.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a recommendation and a second, and a thank you and a second. Nobody's here from Rainier Rec, but I just, great, great start to the year, so. Thanks again to those people. To recommend accepting December 2024, oh, we have to have the liquor store statement, I'm sorry. Jen? They're recommending everything soon. Let me get to it. Go ahead. What do you got going on?
Well, New Year's Eve was actually a big hit, which can go either way, so I was kind of shocked with how well we did. We got the boot hockey tournament this weekend, we got the scrimmage on Sunday, that's already full. Just kind of keep plugging the hole. We got the snow now, I actually had nice home movers yesterday, which is an improvement from last year, since we had no snow, but I think we're going in the right direction right now.
Looks like you have a good handle on your gross profit percentage. That's good to see.
Yeah, I see December from last year compared to this year, you're up 3,300, $3,400, something like that, which is great. Obviously, last winter was not very good, so hopefully we get a little more snow and weather keeps coming.
Right.
And you say you got a youth hockey tournament this weekend?
No, the boot hockey.
Boot hockey tournament?
For our icebox days.
Oh yeah, it's icebox days, of course. Any other questions for Jen?
Nope. Think we had a good year?
Help, all good, everything, everything mechanically working, everything.
I just have one question, was there a problem with the glass washer?
No, it's, he's got it all wired, it's just a matter of, because we have to order a different sink, and we didn't realize that until we talked to the...
Oh, okay.
So we just have to order smaller sinks, you have to have a sink. So that's, just got to order that and...
Cool, alright.
You got to get that just whatever. Yeah, that's going to be done before September. Right now it's quiet, so we have some time, but...
Great.
Anything special coming up for like Valentine's Day or any of that?
It's on a Friday, but I mean, I already talked to the girls. Got one of the best ones working on it, so she'll love it. There's no point in trying to blow a buck beyond what we're doing.
It's overrated.
Yeah.
No, if we keep getting some snow, we should have a good winter.
I agree.
Well, do you have any other questions for Jen?
Nope.
Did we ever figure out what we're going to do with the silo thing?
Yeah, I think we decided that we would sell it and go the other direction about 100%.
Awesome. Do with another one?
That gazebo they have?
Yeah.
Silo, we can sell that and do something different.
Oh, just do something different, not watch it.
Yeah.
Alright. Any more questions? Get a recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second.
You have a recommendation and a second to accept the minimum liquor store operating statement, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Nick Don, Nick's not here, so...
He'll be here next week?
He'll be here next week.
Alright.
We have a confession at the hockey tournament.
Okay. Okay, then we got to review this petition.
Well, the next recommendation is to approve Resolution 2025-01, that you adopt the Rainy Lake Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan.
We have to do the others, one more thing.
Yeah. The vacation petition.
Oh, that's not on my, okay, that's on one I got, okay. Okay, so I didn't have that on my agenda, I got a new sheet of a new agenda, so that's to review, to review vacation petition for the portion of Main Street. I guess it was spokesman, Karina?
I just brought a couple maps, that actually, these were the maps that Dennis developed about when we had the parking concepts. So I just wanted to show you, where the road actually sits is this black line on both sides. And this is where the proposed, with the, you need a 10-foot setback for, you know, proposed, but this black line runs through the front of my home.
Look at it when you're done.
And Paul's...
Here's another copy, give me and Todd one.
Through Jean Kelly's building.
Yep.
And then you guys allowed tiny's to do a little addition at one point.
This part here?
And that also runs through that addition.
Yeah, here's the black lines.
So I just want to give you the map there, so you can understand what I'm talking about.
Where's that alley that was going to vacate?
We've all talked with the neighborhood.
That alley that's right down here. No, no. Okay, alley that's the city, and we want to vacate to the railroad, it's right here.
Highlight the Ys.
So on the vacation, what are you asking for, 10 feet or what are you asking for?
We're asking for 10 feet on the north side, lots 1 through 12. We're asking for 10 feet on the south side, lots 5 through 11.
And that's like the boulevard stuff or what?
That would give us 60 feet?
60 feet would remain, but it would also make it so that our houses are actually on our property, instead of it being that the city, this line runs through our house.
The south side is a little more, more issues than the north side, because obviously your houses, there's some encroachment, and I know with, if you wanted to sell and someone had to go to the bank and get financing, encroachment on a, you know, it would be hard to, we should clean that up.
So we're actually just kind of cleaning up the property line?
Well, we already, as a neighborhood, we already maintain a lot of the properties in front of there, like you helping build that rock garden.
Yeah.
Other things like Paul's, Paul's gardens that he maintains. And we kind of just want it to be, if there's further development from this railroad project in the future, that we can just maintain that extra 10 feet as our property, instead of, we don't know what will happen in Rainier. Most roads are 70 feet wide in the whole city, we're an 80-foot road, but it never was developed as a commercial idea that maybe they had many years ago, and they did that with the road being that wide. I did some research, and most major US cities leave 60 feet. And that would be two lanes of traffic, parallel parking on each side, and five feet for a boulevard, five feet for a sidewalk. So if we were granted to have it reduced to 60 feet, it does leave room for future development. It just keeps us from the parking plan that was over there. You know, we, we're a residential neighborhood, we don't want pull-in parking right to my front door. You know, and it also would give the park an extra 10 feet from future development. Because we don't know what Sienna's going to do in the future, and, you know, they have more power than the government. So for us, we're asking that we can maintain our neighborhood a little better.
You know, originally, we, the sketch that you proposed there, I believe, the red line that you're talking about, where the parking would end, that was 10 feet from the property line?
That's 10 feet from the side of the 80-foot railway. So if you see where...
But also 10 feet, 10 feet from the railway.
Yeah, if you see where the tiny's is and then...
Yep. What I'm trying to say, if this project would have gone, if we would have used the two red lines, which is the back of the sidewalk or the back of the parking, that would be 65, 65 feet. Because I think that on the north side, there was a five, no, that'd be, yeah, there was five foot from the red line because there was a five-foot sidewalk, so that would have been a six, five on the north, 10 on the south. And I remember when I was talking to the engineer about this conceptual plan, that was in my thought process, is to clear the title, so, clear the, vacate the land so that the title would be clear for Paul's house, obviously your house, your front step, and, but only five feet out of north was designed so that this, if this is a conceptual project. So I'm, I understand what it is in that, so.
Does this have to go in front of the zoning?
Do we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, vacation, yeah, we probably have to have a, we'd have to have a vacation hearing.
And we got to put it in the paper?
As I do on everything else, that we, planning and zoning and everything else, that's how we...
Yeah, we just came to us yesterday, so it needs to go to the county, not planning, it needs to go to the county, and different members of, of the county commissioners, not county commissioners, but the assessor and whoever's listed.
So do we have to vote on it now in order for it to go to the county?
No, no.
Or wait on that?
No, we can get that paperwork, you know, done and see if they have any license on it too, and then we'll bring it back before the council.
What, what they're doing now is starting the process, so we understand what you're looking for. We will start the process, there's always a little more to it. I, I think, quite honestly, I'd like to clean up all the issues, especially on residential areas, that if there's an issue, what do we have to do, that, you know, somebody says in the past, you could go ahead, go out here, do that, or there's encroachments, whatever. Clean them up, designate it, get the lines established.
Get ahead of the game.
And understand why we do things.
More people did that if nobody had gone on, so.
No, no, I...
It was a long time ago, I'm saying, not unless we're present, if those meetings, you know.
There's lots, lots of things in the closet here, and we have a chance to clean them up and that, and we are going to be, for your information, you probably, Charles was here, but, you know, Main Street is, the traffic on Main Street, I know is a concern, parking, traffic, so that was one of the main issues that we addressed with our CN, conversation with the architect, to change the entrance, so it comes in off of...
Yeah, it was out of Main.
Shell Route instead of Main, and actually, for your information, one of the proposals was, not proposals, the suggestions was that we restrict West Main to non-commercial traffic. You know, always, you know, obviously, if there's a house mover or something, that would be changed, but we don't want truck traffic going through there. And so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, this conceptual plan had the same thoughts you guys are trying to bring to us right now.
Well, I just wanted to use those for an example, so people can see where the lines are.
Well, it's a good example, because you got the same thought process that I was thinking of, what, clean up some projects, but still give the city enough, you know, enough room to do what we may want to do, or what may be best for the city too, and still maintain the roads and everything else, so.
It's going to be 10 and 10.
That's what we're rousing, yeah, 10 and 10.
Yeah, on the conceptual plan, it is 10 and 5.
Right.
And the sidewalk was on the north, so those are the things we'll consider and we'll start the process.
And it's just, you know, we...
Get the ball rolling here.
Get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
And, you know, I was here for the meeting, I did see like your plan to move the exit of the parking lot, which I thought was a good idea, because it forced traffic down that alleyway. You know, since we put in the four-way stop, we've had a huge reduction in the speed of people going down that road, which has been great, because it used to be people would come down straight off Main Street, hit our road, and we'd be going 40 miles an hour over the jump there, or the hill. And so that's helped a lot, but it's also, we want to maintain it as a residential area and not, you know, we're affected by the railroad more than anybody in town over there, so we're just trying to make some ass to make living over there a little, you know...
Well, there's a twofold problem, and we know that, and the council recognized that right away, so that we're going to try to, well, we will, we will. They'd have to be a big deal to let any commercial traffic through there and that, so this is just kind of an add-on to our thoughts that we had about a week ago.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Well, that's kind of why we're presenting it right now too, is because of the railroad project.
Chris?
Well, I just think it'd be a good idea to add that little bit of property to the park down there, because that park is pretty full.
When you say add a little bit of...
Well, the 10 feet, it would be 10 feet down there too.
Yeah, conceptually, you guys want 10 on each side. I was just going off the plans here, originally, on this plan, it was 5 and 10. That left room for a sidewalk on the north side, it's wide, that was drawn, if you remember the sidewalk. So these are the things we'll bring in front of the, I suppose, planning and zoning and...
No, it's not, it's not part of the list, yeah.
It's got to go to the county, though.
Yeah, to the assessor.
Is that a mine road?
No.
But it has to go in front of the auditor or the assessor.
Yeah, when you have a plot change, plot change, you're...
Property taxes and the gains and that.
Yeah. They're going to change the sizes of lots.
But I would say, I don't see any hangups with it, but...
Yeah, I don't...
Thank you.
I guess we'll find out.
So we'll see.
Yeah, and there's a couple of things I want to discuss in Nick's not here. I got to know where the water lines go to, obviously, we don't want to vacate a line if we have a water line. And right now, I believe they're, again, are they in the Main Street, or they're, are they in that 10 feet? So things I have to check out to make sure, so.
Yeah, I think Marianne and Arden's, Marianne and Arden's property, the water goes down, it goes through in that alley between the terrace and Arden's.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I have, I just have, before you, you know, I would jump into this, I want to make sure that the utilities are in the correct spot, obviously, we're not, and we did the same thing with, on the...
What, Mackenzie lot?
When we vacated a part of the street that goes right there by Lazard, by, for Bowler.
Mackenzie lot?
Yeah, and we had to maintain, maintain a piece for utilities, so, you know, we have to see what can use this for the city, but conceptually, this was, this was fine when I looked at it, but again, I got to check to see, well, I would have to, but we'll have to see, so.
Well, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I know. This water sewer, our water sewer, ingenious it's all on the alley side.
You mean, your water sewer comes from Shell Route?
Yep, from the alley.
Where does, where does, Tim, Tim and Stephanie get their water from?
They would probably be on the end of the line from our...
Yeah, it's on the end of the line.
So it comes up and then goes that way?
Yeah.
See, that's again, I have to clarify where those are, or the city will have to clarify where those are, so that those easements, you know, are not vacated, and then all of a sudden, they're on your property, and then we have to get permission to go and do them. So get some clarifications here, I don't think it'll be an issue once we find out where these are, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have actually one really good question, you mind if I get that?
The only question I would have is on, if this was conceptionally done, that area for the sidewalk, would we want to keep that, you know, if we ran the utility, you know, gas, all of that?
I guess, we'll talk.
This may be a little off topic, but due to this drawing, so this is where the alley goes through.
Yep.
Is there still a lot 14 and 15 that is maintained down here that's owned by the city? Because this isn't...
That's where the road is now.
Oh, it is where the road is. Well, it says here that it goes through 13, because...
Yeah, it's not where it's supposed to be.
Yeah, okay, I was just wondering.
There's a plot and the road are not together, it's been surveyed, actually, the railroad, that last draw, and we have the railroad, is correct, go ahead, keep that. Where the, where the railroad had, it's all been surveyed and that now, so the, I guess it'd be the west end of the, west end of the connection between Shell Route and Main, exactly where it is. We know where it is now, it isn't exactly, it's not where it's shown on that plot. Okay, well, the process is started, we'll jump on it as fast as we can. Okay, moving on, approve Resolution 2025-01 to adopt the Rainy River Lake Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan.
I can ask Jen to speak on that, she's been involved.
Yeah, so I've been on the policy committee for this, and Cheryl's been on the steering committee. This has been a project that Pam Tewey V has headed up from Cooch County Soil and Water in conjunction with members from International Falls, Rainier, the county, and an agency called Bowser. Basically, every area in Minnesota has been trying to form unified watersheds, and they're, that's what this process was for northern Minnesota. One of the reasons I got involved in this was because I was concerned that this was something flying under a different flag to try to pull a quick win over residents, to make, doing things harder, enjoying water harder, but that's not what it was at all. They are not creating policy, rules, or ordinances, they're not touching, it's just basically identifying issues and prioritizing them for future funding, funding opportunities. And it's, they're making it so you have to kind of do this, so for example, if you want to tackle the erosion issue on Shorewood, now we have a better footing to go and get funding for issues and priorities that have been identified in this plan, which we have a copy of, and everyone, I encourage everyone to go and read through it, but it was a collaboration between all the state and maybe even federal agencies, because at different points, there were common periods, and we had public meetings and participation, and I think we came up with something that was good for the area, and I, if you have additional deeper questions, I think we came up with something that was good for the area, and I, if you have additional deeper questions, I would contact Pam Tveeve with Cooch County Soil and Water. But I felt really good about what we were able to accomplish in terms of identifying our watershed and collaboration, and finding issues of importance, and reaching out to the population and finding out what they value, and what they want identified and focused on with our water quality, you know, drinking water, and the health of rivers, and wild rights, all the things. That's what was discussed and went over in these meetings. And that was for, that came from subject matter experts, so I, I participated in the policy, so we did a lot of budgeting and following up on the meetings that came from these subject matter meetings, which were, you know, what these people do for a living, and we took their expertise, and that's what we went with, so... This is us becoming a part of that, and showing our support. Do you have anything to add as a policy?
I don't think you want to recommend that.
Yes. I'll make a motion to recommend approving Resolution 2025-01 to adopt the Rainy River Lake Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan.
I'll second that.
Recommendation is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so carry. Brings us to open forum. I just want to ask the, your affected residents, so I don't know if any, Charles I know was at the meeting here, we did have a meeting with CN, with, CN failed to appear themselves, they did send representatives, and the topic was the conditional use permit for the new proposed depot site. And so it got to be quite a lengthy discussion, and I may give you a quick overview of that, and some of the things that were discussed, we hit a lot of the topics, obviously, one was traffic, and we we stood up for Rainier and made sure that our position on the traffic going down Main Street, or Main Avenue, would not increase, and it would be restricted to just residential traffic. Also, we, we said there would be no access to the parking lot. Coming off Main, it would have to come off the alley at Shell Route, and obviously, some possible signs, signings for no commercial traffic. That was the utility thing. Another major topic was lighting. Obviously, the parking lots could be large and everything else, and the lighting, there was quite concerns from the National Park Service and residents. And so, the architect who has a lot to say in this, because he's the design architect, downward lighting, dark sky concept was brought up multiple times, so he's aware of that. He personally said he didn't think there'd be much issues redesigning it for what we wanted, there was some, some lighting that was necessary, but... So we'll have to wait till we see the second drawing on the drawing, but it was very positive on the lighting issue and on the traffic issue. It seemed to me like we kind of got what we wanted there, and obviously, they're gonna do this, and so trying to get cooperation, and we seem we have that, and he has some say in on those two issues. And next was noise, because it's twofold project here, he has a building project, but obviously, we have the noise that we brought up, and some ideas that tie in, in correlation with his, his deal, and some safety, and some ideas for sirens and containments and things like that were brought up. Another thing that was probably of your interest a lot is the alley vacation, at the end of Shell Route, right where it turns and goes north. The city still owns that alley, and obviously, that's where the entrance to the parking lot would come off of that alley, right by that fire hydrant that's there. And it was a consensus of the council that we would vacate that alley, and do a land exchange for him, that'd be the quickest, the cleanest, and everything in exchange for Sharon Ball property. And he's gonna take that back to, he has the ear of the CN, because this is probably a, you know, there's probably so many stages in this, and he's just one of them. But he does have the ear of them, and they, obviously, he's the project to, to move on, he's a big part, piece of the puzzle. So that's in the works, we'll see how that progresses, Cheryl, I think you probably made a, you probably put a lot of these things in print, and, you know, made a PowerPoint presentation for us, so that we can pass it on to the CN, how much they're gonna pay attention to and that, we don't know, they never show up. But we did make a note that communication is really necessary for us to act in, you know, in a speedy or in a timely manner, let's put it that way, because they come and they want something, they want us to act, well, start telling us about something, so we can think about it, and we might be able to get to a conclusion, but... So that we made that point. So that's kind of where we are, other than the fact, it might be interesting that the demo is in the, is in the design to be demolished, and that the alleyway, Shell Route, would be rebuilt, or resurfaced and everything else, but we did, made the suggestion, and they thought it'd be very, very good in a public relations deal for them, that if the depot was movable, that we, we try to move the depot about six hundred feet, well, I just made the suggestion, six hundred feet to the west or to the east. And we might be able to get monies, well, I'm sure there's some monies available to refurbish that, and possibly turn it into a new city hall. So those are all conceptual ideas, a lot of them weren't conceptual, but that was, but there are some, some of the things that went on, I thought, as probably the most affected people, they're sitting right there, so I wanted to let you know what we got going on there. There's also a ten-foot, up to a ten-foot-high retaining wall, could be built on the lakeside, on the east side, and on the west side. Obviously, not on the rail side. And we told them to, we want a real aesthetic-looking wall, not just a prison-looking wall, and gave them some suggestions on what to do there, and he, being the architect, now, he does have a lot of say in that in design, so I feel we made some real positive headways with those suggestions. I think those, I personally think those will be designed into the plan, I really feel those will be part of the plan, they're, quite honestly, they're, they're zero cost, you know, and that's the number one thing, the railroad, it's concerned, how much this is gonna cost, and those are non, you know, they gotta put a surface on it, what's it gonna look like, let's make it appealing to us, so... So I, I think we got three or four things there that we take, we took out of the meeting, a little communication. I think we can resolve a lot of the other issues too, so, just an update on it. Anything else for discussion? Chris?
I just want to say thank you for standing up to be here.
Well, I think that, yeah, well the...
We don't want to get steam.
I don't think, thank you, you're welcome. Figured that was our job, that's what we were supposed to represent, and I'm sure we expressed the thoughts of what you'd like to say, or we would have said, so that's what they are. How they, we haven't got any of it yet. I don't, I don't want to consider this a battle, but those few things I did tell you about, half of them are, are, when they're a non, non-cash issue, there are a lot easier to resolve, and I know some of them are, and so I think we're, we got, which are probably some of the biggest concerns, you know, I, I think are arguable, that we talked about. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Got a motion to adjourn? And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so carry, thank you.